Yeah. You might want to ramp up. I was going to sketch out here. Okay. Great.
Leave a space because if people are reading another comment, they have to talk to them. And no one behind the council.
Sounds good. See you there.
They can go around you.
Is this okay? A little further in?
That's really good.
Oh. It's all good. I can stand. I sit on my butt all day.
I forgot.
Um, a little, but not too much.
Okay. Go for it. No, I was like, I parked in the grass.
Twenty-eight. Yeah, that one, that thing never worked decent. Yeah. It's supposed to, it's supposed to adjust itself, but it doesn't.
Actually, that is right to my, my.
To the world's clock.
I got twenty-nine right now. Do you?
Yep.
See, that one just turned to thirty now. Uh, I'd still got twenty-nine.
We need more chairs out here, too. More chairs? Just standing.
Hmm? It should, yeah, mine's on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before the, before the open public forum, I'm going to read a statement. The city of Cold Spring vehemently rejects racist behavior in all its forms. One of the most insidious forms, which is not always visible to the community, is harassment targeting a single community member or family. Racism is harmful first and foremost to the victims. The damage to the sense of security and peace of mind in their own home is even more significant than the property damage resulting from the incident and will leave them with lasting scars. Racist behavioral behavior is harmful to our whole community as a, as well. It is not right and it is not welcome here. I want to strongly reiterate the city of Cold Spring does not tolerate racism of any form. We strive to be a welcoming community for all persons, no matter race, color, ethnicity, religion, gender, identification, age, ability, place of origin, citizenship, status, or veteran status, and we will continue to promote, promote the community value. Okay, open public forum. Anybody wishing to speak, you have up to three minutes. If you want to, if you want to talk, raise your hand and we'll have you come up to the mic here and you have up to three minutes to speak. Does anybody want to start clip?
Is this appropriate time for me?
Go ahead. Yep.
This is making it a public.
Yeah, you can make the public announcement and then we can go with the rest.
This is your.
This is your appropriate time.
This is what I really appreciate about your agenda is that you do allow the public to come in and freely say what they have to say. I'm Cliff Johnson, trustee with the Cold Spring Area Historical Society. Most of you may know that's hometown pride days this coming weekend and we're having an open house on Thursday, or Friday, I'm sorry, Friday from nine AM to two PM. Won't be much different from any other day except we'll have cookies and coffee. What else? Uh, we have a special display for several months now on baseball teams in the area. I think we've got either a photograph, a uniform, piece of equipment from just about every community that we represent. We represent, just in case you're not aware, if you think of a map with farming on the northwest corner and Marty on the southeast corner and make a rectangle, that's our area of interest. It says Cold Spring area, that's another story, but we'll also have our trailer with a display of early school houses in the area with students, with buildings, little school equipment. For those of you who remember, I keep hearing about those who had their hand on the table and had a yardstick put on it while we've got yardsticks just for memory's sake. Okay. Anyhow, everybody is invited between nine and two on Friday. We're just sort of right over there between the pillar and the state bank. So, any questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Take care. Have a good meeting.
Thank you.
Anybody else that wishes to speak? Go ahead. Go up, up to the microphone, yeah, thank you.
So, my name's Katie Westlin. My name is Katie Westlin. My sign says, "You are an accomplice to attempted murder if you don't choose to act." So, the city council, as city council members, you are the check and balance against the police department. What you need to do is you need to act. The Cold Spring Police need to reach out for help, whether that's at the Stearns County level, at the state level, or the federal level. These are hate crimes. And so, I'm asking you to act.
Is there a way you could turn up the microphones for people to come in?
It's not connected. We don't have.
We don't have speaker system out there, no. One of you.
Yeah, fire capacity is. Oh, Jesus.
Go ahead.
Hello, my name is John Demant. I live in Wake Park. I feel like I had to come because I was appalled at the stories I've read about the way this family's been harassed in this community. I completely agree with the last person who said these are hate crimes. I was surprised to see that this incident, this last incident was not charged as second degree assault with a dangerous weapon, which is the definition. And then I realized, reading a little more, that you cannot charge something as a hate crime unless it's an assault technically, so it seems like that's why maybe it was not chosen to be classified that way. A motor vehicle, a truck is clearly a dangerous deadly weapon. That's the new tactic of the fascists is to run over protesters with their vehicles. We're lucky, nothing worse happened this time. If, if this is not escalated and treated as an assault and a hate crime, I worry that the reputation of this community will become even worse. Law enforcement in this area is kind of a joke. I mean, we had a serial killer confess that they did it to the police in an interview and they just let him go. Another college student disappeared and they said, "Well, maybe it was the turtles. It couldn't have been the pedophile priests." So, let's just keep looking. These are clearly hate crimes. It's clearly an assault, attempted assault with a deadly vehicle, deadly weapon. We need to take this seriously or I don't know what's going to happen. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jane Conrad. I live in Richmond. I moved to this area of the country from New York in January of nineteen ninety-three. So, I'll tell you, it was a bit of a shock getting off the plane here, but I'm a Jewish woman and I lived here for many years and I kept that part of my life secret. And as I live here, and Mr. Mayor, I respect what you said at the beginning here about racism, but as I live here, I heard the anti-Semitic comments, Jew 'em down. I've heard comments about Latino people being rapists and drug dealers and African-American people being murderers and how black men want to ravish white, white women. We've all heard it, but you as leaders have to do more than just reading a statement at the beginning. You have to, you've got to speak up to individuals when you're out in public, when you hear these type of comments. They're very hurtful. I had a child that I took out of the school district here and put her, when she was in high school, into Saint John's because she was LGBTQ and she attempted suicide because she was being bullied so badly. At twelve years old, that's what my child tried to do. We need you to lead by example. You're all leaders. Hold the police department accountable on every time, whether it is racism, domestic violence, when somebody in this town violates a restraining order, they need to be arrested. We need the police to protect this family, to patrol that area, and if, and I realize that you guys are on a limited budget, but if you can't do it, Stearns County is here. I'm also asking you to get the Minnesota Attorney General involved. Keith Ellison. That will not hurt the reputation of this community. If anything, it's going to make us stand out as a star city, that we don't tolerate and what is, and we don't want this, but what is going to happen is if we can't make sure that this family is safe in the community, if the police can't do it, then civilians are going to do this. And we're going to protect them. We don't want to do it, but we're going to do what we have to do. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Obviously, you guys are helping run the state, run the town government, but before you're a city council member, you're a part of the city. You're a part of the community. And growing up in a small town, small town, Minnesota, I, we're always prided in the idea that when one of us is hurting, we step in. We do everything we can as humans. If we're dropping off casseroles, if we're talking publicly about bad things that have happened, et cetera. And so, I ask you, not just as positions of authority, because I know you have very limited legal power, to at least publicly come out and request that this be considered an assault and therefore can be considered a hate crime and that you are absolutely disgusted that this person has been left this long to the point where there were babies on the other side of that wall. As a mom, I, I can't begin to think the pain that they must be feeling, the fear that they must feel. And I don't, I think that regardless of whether you live in Minneapolis or Saint Cloud or Duluth or Cold Spring, in America, you should feel safe in your home. Period. Oh, I'm Chantel. I'm from Saint Cloud. And so, I guess my ask of you guys tonight is to not only say we stand against racism, but to ask that the attorney, the county and/or state attorney, to step in and to consider these crimes to be much more egregious than the damage to property because several of your own were almost killed that night and that should never be okay. I also, if you guys feel comfortable, I want you to also speak out against the problems that have been happening with the school board in the district because while you directly are not in authority, you're an authority of the town and you have influence and I feel like we should use that whenever we can because obviously you have more power, Mr. Mayor, than say Andrea does as a single person and that in order to step up and care for your community to speak out, not just that racism is bad, but what you want to see your city, your county, the state if we need to, do to address what happened to one of your own. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor Dave, council members. My name is Ryan Henon. I live at six oh six Emma Drive and I would, I'm on the planning commission for the city of Cold Spring and I would be remiss, the more important thing, I'm a neighbor and a friend, through the Robinsons. I'm here with my wife, I wrote this because I didn't trust myself, I don't know what I was going to say. I'm here with my wife Adele in support of Andrea and Phil Robinson and their family. We've known and lived near this family for almost eight years and I can, and I can't speak highly enough about them. Andrea is a passionate mother, willing to do anything to protect her family and Phil might be the nicest guy I've ever met. The torment and injustice that this family has struggled through these last few months, probably much longer, is just inconceivable. We've watched as they struggled through the administration within our school district and the struggle they had in holding those students accountable for the mistreatment and bullying of their children. The inability for anyone to take significant action in that case was profound to me and to everyone in our community, within a community on Emma Drive. That situation somehow was the spark that was the fire and someone that started targeting this family in a way that I'd never seen before. The whole situation was truly unbelievable, except that I'd seen it with my own eyes. I saw the pain and the anguish in their faces and ultimately the hopelessness that settled in as nothing seemed to happen to this insidious and unsettled individual. I felt that as if, I felt as if the police, the prosecutors, or anyone could have taken a hard line to settle this, but instead they just wanted to see it play itself out. The problem was this guy was escalating the situation at every turn. The inevitable was apparently going to happen as this guy wouldn't stop until someone was hurt or worse. It is an uneasy feeling knowing this is happening in our community, but it is not happening to me or my family and I can't even imagine, I can't even imagine the fear, the anger, the anger and resentment that they are having at this moment. This is a dark time for our community, but through this darkness, there can be light. It is not time to sugarcoat this situation with the typical rhetoric that this is not representative of our city, of our community, and that we're all welcome. If we stand for our neighbors, for our community, then that means we take action. We do things that we have not done before. We find ways to welcome everyone, include everyone, having an open, honest dialogue, but what really happens in this town is the start and it's the beginning, but it is not the end. We need to move the needle on social and racial inequalities in our neighborhoods and, and start bringing people together. We have an opportunity as leaders to push change. It's time to have some uncomfortable conversations. The government is here to protect its citizens and when things like this happen, we have failed. Let's learn from this. Step up, make a difference. You all are capable of leading us through this. I know many of you and I know you are all capable and you will be on the right side of making change happen. We stand with support with the Robinsons in their struggle and I hope that this is a spark that will finally bring change to this community. Cold Spring needs great families like them.
Thanks, Ryan.
Hi, my name is Billie Jean Van Knight and I am from Saint Paul, Minnesota, so I took a trek today and I don't recognize any of the people here, so that means nobody else, and I didn't tell anybody that I was coming up here from my group because I wanted to give you all a chance because once we start coming up here, it's going to be a lot for you. So, I just wanted to let you all know that we are Minnesotans. We are all Minnesotans, not just the Twin Cities. We're not just here to protect the people in the Twin Cities. We will come up here. It is not that far. I got a car. I got room in my car for other people. So, I also, I'm going to tell you, I grew up in Minnesota. I went to College of Saint Benedict. There were four African-Americans who started in, at Saint Benedict when I was a freshman there. I was the only one to graduate because it was very difficult. The first year, the first, I don't even, I don't remember if it was the first time I took the bus or the second time or whatever, but soon I was warned to only go on the bus or once I got my car to just stay on the road to either Saint John's or Saint Cloud and not come in between because of the KKK presence. This was twenty, I'm, I graduated in two thousand. This is twenty-one years ago and to hear stuff like this happening still, we're still, it's, it's not okay. It's not okay. We're working hard to fight the systematic racism and this stuff is easy and we can, it's easy to target, so you don't want us up here targeting that because it is, isn't it easy, it's an easy thing to point to and say, "No, that's not okay." And it's not okay. So, just, I, I want you to get the, to, to tell the governor for one thing because he's always talking about how school is most important and his education thing, so you need to, to ask the governor for help, you need to ask the, the Attorney General for help, you need to ask whoever you can for help to make sure that we don't have to come up here because you don't want us up here.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Deanna Peterson. I was raised in this community and my mom still lives at four three six North Sixth Avenue.
Hi, I'm Deanna Powers and I was raised in Cold Spring at four three six North Sixth Avenue. I'm proud to be from this community and I love the values that I learned here. I also live in a mixed-race family and so, my children increasingly do not feel safe coming to visit their grandma. That's sad. It's sad for us as a family and it's sad for me because it, it colors the story that I thought I knew about this community where I was raised. So, I'm just here to show solidarity and to stand in support with you all. I see you and I know that we as a community can and must do better and so, I'm just asking you to be brave. Just be brave. Thank you.
After this one, ma'am, after this one. Okay, go ahead. No, you're, you're up. No, you're up.
Okay, my name's Natalie Ringsmuth from Saint Cloud. I'm the director of Unite Cloud and we have been working with the Robinson family for way too long on this very issue. And when I've talked to leaders in your community, this is what I've heard. It all, all goes back to Minnesota nice, but we want people to be Minnesota nice for real because Minnesota nice says things like, "Well, I want to do something, but what would my lawyer say? I want to do something, but what about the perception from people at my church? What about the pushback we'll get from racists in our community? What about the friends I will lose? What about my mom and dad not talking to me anymore? What if I lose my council seat? What if I lose my mayor seat? And what if we do something and then I'm targeted?" So, after a year of working with the Robinson family, to know that one of her children could have been killed by this man, let's be real, this is a life, these are lives we're talking about. I see my fifteen and sixteen-year-old today and I think that could have been me. Please put yourself in her position. Please use empathy and don't just use words, but use action. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Deborah McCarroll. I don't live here in Cold Spring, but I was an OBGYN and probably delivered a lot of the people who do. So, I feel like I have a close connection to this community. I've known many people from this community and actually my son, my black son, went to school in this community and he graduated in two thousand and three. He was part of the stellar drum line that Recore had at that time and he was very harassed in school. And so, the Robinson situation cuts my heart to the core. I am very disappointed that there hasn't been more progress in this community environment in the last twenty years and so, I beg you, all of you, please do everything in your power so that twenty years from now, we won't be saying the same thing.
Can this be lifted up or?
You can just speak.
I just find it strange, there's no podium, but. Okay. Hi, Mayor, Mayor Dave, council members, thank you. My name is Julie Woods. I've lived here and taught high school here since two thousand and one. I have had six children, three who graduated from Recore and three who are still in the middle school and high school. Mayor Dave, I think it was about a year ago that my oldest daughter, Chita, took it upon herself because all of her siblings and myself were very troubled by Confederate flags flying right across from the middle school. She, she talked to that gentleman several times first, just so you're aware of that. I don't know if she articulated that. It wasn't about just having protests, she was about not having her sister say that she's scared to run past there and to try to help the school district not have that when school started. not be on the headlines for this kind of thing at all. And my children have loved growing up here, and it just makes me so sad that, you know, Jada received a lot of harassment for that, too. And so, when I think, can't see the Robinsons, I think that could be us, like, out there in Richmond, I'm a single mother with all those children, and, you know? And to think the things that she received, and then the comments that she received in support of her, were almost, a lot from local people, but a lot, unfortunately, and it hurts my heart, from graduates, beautiful, highly educated people, who said they couldn't not see themselves living here for those very reasons. I mean, we moved here on purpose. Like, I was teaching in the suburbs, and we drove around Minnesota, like, I kid you not, looking for places. And when I said I was moving here from Minnetonka High School, they said, "Oh, that sounds like God's country," you know? And I was like, "Yeah, I think so," right? And so, I come, we come with sincere hearts, and the Robinsons moved here, I mean, so anyway, that's just what I have to say about that, and I guess I wouldn't have thought, but experience has shown me that unless we just be on the right side of history with some of these things. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
Hi, I'm Rachel Wenner. Thank you for holding this meeting tonight. This has got to stop. I'm born and raised in Cold Spring, a proud member of this community, went to undergraduate and medical school, came back to Cold Spring, because I love Cold Spring. This has got to stop. It has to stop now. I want, I've always been taught that you can do more change within the organization than trying to make change from without. That's why I'm here. We need to make change, and it has to happen now. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tony. I live out in Sartell. I grew up in Luxembourg, right down the way. I lost a good friend in 2003, Aaron Rollins, in that same school. And now, this racism and the hate is coming right back, and are we just going to sit idly by and watch young kids get snuffed out again, and just not do anything about it? It's hard to watch, and it's hard to see, and the cycle is just going to continue unless we do something. That's all I got. Thank you.
That would be, that'll be better.
I currently live in St. Cloud, and when I first heard this story, I was pretty appalled. But something I want to share is that, like, we're not too far removed from Jim Crow America. I mean, I think a lot of people forget that in their mind, that like, racism, if I know something, it's really is racism, right? Like, I've experienced it, I've lived it, I know it. And I think some of y'all up here, I'm going to keep it real, don't look upset enough about this situation. Yeah. Like, my family's from the South. They have walked and have seen bodies liched, okay? Some of y'all don't look upset enough. This is appalling. Like, if you can't be safe in your home, like, we're black, right? I'm black. If I can't be safe in my home, like, I know I have no guarantee to be safe when I step outside my house, but if I can't be safe in my home, like, some of y'all, I'm going to tell you, Mayor, if you're the mayor, if this is not resolved, I will come back to this city with more people, a bigger voice, more power, like, this, this is not over. We need more than words. Words are not enough.
That's right.
We need action. We need action. I'm going to tell you, people will take it to the streets. We've seen it, we've watched history move, this is serious, and some of y'all do not look upset enough. Y'all just look too calm in y'all soul. Because when I seen that picture, I don't know if you've seen it, but that shook my soul. Like, Emmett Till has celebrated an 80th birthday, right? Like, we know hate crime is real. So, call it that. Call it racism. Call it assault. That's what it is. If you don't call it out, your silence is violence.
It should go without saying, but black lives matter to me, and they matter to everybody in this room, and brown lives matter. And I want to point out something she said that really hit me. She said, "I'm not guaranteed being safe when I walk out my house." And I thought to myself, "No, that cannot happen here." And a community that doesn't protect all of its citizens protects no one. If they are unsafe, I am unsafe. Everyone in this room is unsafe. And that is not okay. That is not okay for any of us in this room to sit here and say that that guy should have been able, allowed to get to this point. Because if that would have happened to me, I think it would have been different. And I don't, I'm not proud of that statement. And I have kids in the school district, who I've been up there, too. This is, racism is knit through this community. It goes longer than Minnesota nice. But you, you have some power to decide. You can't control the whole community, I understand that. But you can say, as far as we, you can control, this is not okay, and this is not who we want to be. This community, we, I've been on the Planning Commission, we want to grow. That family is exactly who we are looking for. But we've told them, "We don't want you here. We're not going to protect you." And that's not okay. And I'm asking you, we, as a community, can be better than this if we make the choice to be better than this, and if we don't, that guilt is on everybody here.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to be here today to share. My name is Ron Ferguson. I'm a resident of Cold Spring, and I chose to be here, just like we said, I chose this town, and I thought, "This is the town to raise my family, we're a diverse, mixed-race family, that this could be a safe place." And every turn that I see, there's more evidence that there's threats, there is racism, there are issues, and every time I hear it, I hear people say, "Well, if it were me, I'd head out." Or, "Maybe you want to move to the cities, Ron, or maybe you want to take your family somewhere else where it's safe." And I'm here to say, that can't be the narrative. We, you're not going to run us out. You're not going to run us out of here. See, all of us, the Robinsons, like, this is our town, too, and we deserve to be here and feel safe and not threatened in our community. And I, I think that, I'm asking this tonight, three things. One, that we have recognition, let's admit it, we have an issue with racism in our society. Let's recognize that. Let's just be honest, as a community, that we have issues. Number two, that we have redress for the Robinsons family. They need support. We, as a community, need to take care of own, that's our own. This family is our community. We need to do something. And number three, we need to heal, as a community. People are hurting. This is hard being here tonight for many of us. I don't want to be here in a sense that it's painful, it brings back lots of things that we've survived through, many of us have survived through, and we hope that this community is a place that I can live and thrive. But, boy, we got to continue to fight, and I need, I need healing tonight. So, what I'm asking is for those things, and please, and no, we, as a community, we need to stick together. And I'm here, and I'm not going anywhere, so thank you.
My name is Kit Ferber, and I've lived in this area since about 2003, 2010, sorry. But my biggest point is, if it's gone this far, then I think we, as a community, should help those people fix their house, because this has been happening too long for them, and nothing was done. And I think all of our hearts, we have so many people here today, today, in fact, I wish we would have had this in the high school, that meeting, because there's too many people packed in here that can't really get up and speak, and maybe another meeting has to be done, maybe not, but I think we should help pay for their damages.
Chris Moore from St. Cloud. I had one really small thing to say when I walked in tonight, but it's kind of grown a little bit. And I'm heartbroken for why we're here, but I am feeling so lucky that I come from every place of privilege. I'm a European-American, I'm a male, I speak English, I was born in the United States, I've got birthright citizenship, I've got a high school diploma, I've got a college degree. My parents are still married, they've got college degrees, I've got everything good, and some people don't. My body works, there are people who are born with disabilities, there are people born with different skin, born with different, in different places, in different languages, and my parents are rock star parents, and they told me that you treat everybody the way you want to be treated, and so many people don't get that either. And I don't know if I'm speaking to the microphone and people at home, or if I'm speaking to y'all, or whoever needs to hear it, but I tell my kids all the time, and this is what I came for, was bullying is never okay. It doesn't matter if you're four on the playground, or you're 54, or you're 94, it's just not okay.
Hi, my name is Kisa Webster, and I live in St. Cloud. I was moved to come here because the outer community is watching this problem that you have, and it's very sad to see how deeply this has touched this family and others, in the schools, in the community, with the police here tonight. And we're all rooting for you to fix this and make this better, and be a vibrant community that welcomes all people in words and in actions, and with safety and with inclusion. I want to stop here when I travel through and have lunch, because I'm choosing to spend my money in a community that is inclusive. And I think there are many people who make decisions about where they stop, where they open a business, where they move. We are all watching this community, and we want to celebrate with you. This seems like a pivotal point. This horrible thing has happened, and I hope that this will be a point of change in actions and programs and things that will make a difference to the residents of this community, and we will all be watching.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. My name is Jill Krebsbach, and sadly, I'm associated and affiliated with Cold Spring, especially right now, by zip code 56320 only. You need to get serious, swallow your small-town pride, egos, and do something. This is pathetic, archaic, and unacceptable. I cannot believe this is happening in our community, in central Minnesota, to these people, and nothing has been done about it. I stopped in support over a year ago when this problem started, to give my show of support to those kids on that sidewalk. This is absolutely unacceptable and totally unbelievable. There is no way I can accept that this is even happening in your community. I've been a part of 56320 for 27 years, been a part of central Minnesota and Stearns County my whole life, obviously, unlike these people and many others in this community that hopefully have chose to move here, like I did, or stay. I was born and raised, obviously, with white privilege. My heart breaks for them. I was raised by great parents that loved people, all people, and raised us to accept and build up and love one another as we want to be loved and treated. There is no way that this should go on like this, or get to this point. There's no way I could be celebrating a small-town pride come this weekend. That is absolutely unacceptable. I pay taxes here. It almost is agonizing to think I pay taxes. It's ridiculous. Do something. This can't continue. And yes, the people are watching. They've been watching for years, because this is not the first thing embarrassing and ridiculous that's happened, and yet we overlook it. It's not, and sadly, I'm not surprised. I'm not surprised. It's got to change. It's got to change.
Hi, my name is Barb Zobitz, and I live in Cold Spring, and I'm here tonight to show my support for the Robinson family, and I'm also here because I am the mother of two beautiful African-American girls. We moved here six years ago, wanting to live in the country, coming from Colorado, we were very excited to be in Minnesota, closer to family again. But there is not a day that goes by that I don't question whether or not I did right by my girls by bringing them to this community. Within a week of unpacking the moving van, we went to a neighborhood park. My girls got out of the car, ran ahead to the playground, like kids do, and there was this other little girl there, about four, five years old, maybe, and she started crying. Now, I do not think my kids are saints, they do things sometimes, so I went up to this little girl, and I said, "You know, what's going on? Did something happen?" Her parents weren't at the playground at the time, they were at a picnic table further And as I asked her what was going on, she said, "Those girls, those girls can't be here. They're bad. They have black skin. They shouldn't be here." And immediately, the mama bear in me came out. Now, fortunately, that girl's mom wasn't too far away, she came over, apologized, and said, "I don't know where she heard such a thing." It doesn't take much to imagine where it probably came from. I have a girl entering the seventh grade this year. I'm scared. I am scared for what the Rukori schools and this community, the effect that this will have on my beautiful daughter. Please, do the right thing. Make it safe.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to add one more thing. I said, I don't know what would happen if nothing happened, I think the first step would have to be some type of boycott, hopefully in the area, starting with the businesses, the jewelry, the creamery, to show solidarity, like, we can't support this. So, that'll be our step, if you guys want to take any more steps. this other little girl there, about four, five years old maybe, and she started crying. Now, I do not think my kids are saints, they do things sometimes, so I went up to this little girl and I said, you know, what's going on, did something happen? Her parents weren't at the playground at the time, they were at a picnic table further And as I asked her what was going on, she said, "Those girls, those girls can't be here, they're bad, they have black skin, they shouldn't be here." And immediately, the mama bear in me came out. Now fortunately, that girl's mom wasn't too far away, she came over, apologized, and said, I don't know where she heard such a thing. It doesn't take much to imagine where it probably came from. I have a girl entering the seventh grade this year, I'm scared, I am scared for what the Rorory schools and this community, the effect that this will have on my beautiful daughter. Please, do the right thing, make it safe.
I just wanted to add one more thing, I said, I don't know what would happen if nothing happened, I think the first step would have to be some type of boycott, hopefully in the area, starting with the businesses, the jewelry, the creamery, to show solidarity, like, we can't support this. So, that'll be our step, if you guys won't take any more steps.
My name is Magic Maggie Jennings and I live in Cold Spring. I moved to Cold Spring some years ago when I retired from being an EL teacher at Wilmer High School. Wilmer had its problems with racism too. In fact, we had a racist member of the city council and we voted him off of there. As a teacher, we would see many times in the schools that when violence and racism and really disrespectful disruption of everyone is not dealt with, then it's emboldened and it becomes much worse. We've seen this certainly in our national rhetoric in the last several years and it only emboldens those who want to be so violent and hateful in local communities too. And I don't think Cold Spring wants to be such a community. And I ask you to make sure that it is brought to criminal justice and indeed refer to the Minnesota Attorney General and talk to Governor Walz. I know there are things that can be done and when hate crimes are committed, you must respond quickly and immediately, otherwise it always gets worse. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Ferguson and my husband spoke earlier and there is a few things that I wanted to share today. This morning, as I drove into St. Cloud where I work, because we chose to move here to Cold Spring, because he wanted to retire here, and there is a couple of things and there are more phrases that stick out to me than like a story, but something that came to me was, "We are the people, we are the people." And I remember that from like school and having the Constitution, like, "We are the people." And another thing that came to me while I was preparing myself for the day was, "Fight for me," that was a song that I was listening to, a Christian rap song actually, and it's "Fight for me" and I thought, "We are the people, will we fight? Will we fight? Will we bring this to a head? Like, will we say enough is enough?" And another thing that came to me because I, I, I see things black and white, I do and, and I work with, you know, my work is with, with difficult situations and hate can be sorted out behind bars if it's gonna have an action that was taken. It deserves to sit and to think about what has been done. If you want to act out on that, you get to pay for that, that's a consequence and the consequence needs to be served. It deserves, it deserves behind bars and some time to sit and think if this hate is really worth it. And I will leave with this, I have an eight-year-old still and she is going to school here in this school district and we have graduated, one of our children and another one went to school here and we came back to this area, but we have six altogether and we are a mixed family, we're a diverse family and my eight-year-old reminds me all the time and just recently, she's, she reminds me, "Mom, you just get to get tan" and I do, I just get to get tan, my shade of white gets to get darker in the summer and lighter in the winter, it's what it is. She celebrates, she celebrates and I want her to celebrate that she gets to have brown skin, like she's got brown skin, she's like, "Mom, you get tan." But I have brown skin and I'm like, "You do?" And I want her to celebrate that with all of our friends, with this community and to feel like she's a part, she can contribute and she doesn't have to be afraid. She doesn't have to be afraid. We chose to come back here, we chose our house prayerfully because we want our children to come home. I want my kids to come home and if they can't feel safe coming home, they're not gonna come home. And I want them home. I want them home to visit, I want them to be able to celebrate the community that, that their dad and I have chosen to be a part of and that's what I want. So hate can sit behind bars and think about their choice. We got consequences, we can take an action. Words are not enough, we all know that when we're parenting. You can talk till you're blue in the face, but then you might need to take an action. So that's what I have.
Hi there, my name is Doc Cook, I'm from St. Cloud, I'm a member of the Cold Spring Chamber of Commerce however and do business in the community. You know, the Civil Rights Act of 1968 was the first piece of federal legislation that called out specific wording on hate crime and since that time, there's been many acts passed that support that. One of them comes to mind is Matthew Shepard and sexual orientation, hate crimes against that. One of the things that that, that did is not only provide backup, but federal resources to state and local communities so that they can deal with what's going on the last eighty-some days. I think what we're all waiting to see is whether this is gonna be a community that draws the line in the sand and uses those resources or panders to their constituency, frankly. And Mr. Mayor, I know you chose your words carefully, your statement walks the fence. It does not say that you think this should be, this should be prosecuted as a hate crime, it doesn't say that you're gonna use every resource that you have to see that it gets prosecuted as such. It's not, it's not a leadership position, it's a statement that I've heard a thousand times from a thousand different other political leaders. And I think what we're all waiting to see, we're watching to see what side of the fence everybody's gonna fall on here. So make the right decision.
Hello, hello, I am 11-years-old and I see that this is not right and he, whoever his name is, he has committed a hate crime, an assault, and destruction of property and it's not right, so... Sorry, I had bad memory, sorry.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor, I'm Bill Molliter, I live in Cold Spring on 805 First Street South, I'm also on the planning and zoning board, this pisses me off, excuse me, but we'll take action. I wish the number nine item on the agenda, the police department, I don't see him here and I think most of us, oh, okay, I wish he would be here because people really want to know who is gonna drive this ship for us. We're absent, we see the absence, we see no visible of the police department, my understanding is from outsourced departments, we don't have a great working relationship with the Cold Spring Police Department for many years and that needs to stop. Keep your pride at home and go to work and then if that gentleman that drove in the car would be the color of my dear friend Phil, yes, he would have been in jail and locked up the first frickin' time. Why, why do the, why, why is it the pendulum swings way too far on one side and not at all on the other side? I mean, my friend Phil, it's, this shouldn't have ever happened and I live by, do the right next thing. Police Department, Cold Spring, do the right next thing, City Council, do the right next thing and we'll be counting on you. Thank you.
Hello, I am Sandy Schlungen and I also live here in Cold Spring, my two parents have already talked today. I came up here just to inform you, like, this is happening, this is actually happening and it's not just to your family, it's to me, it's to every black person that lives here. I don't like to go grocery shopping here, guys, I don't like to grocery shop in my own town, I don't like to stop at the gas station, I don't like it, it's, I'm scared. I have a three-year-old daughter, they keep asking me if I'm gonna put her in preschool in Cold Spring, what do you think, should I? I don't know, I'm terrified to put her here, but I want her to be here because this is where we live. And like my dad said, "We're not gonna go anywhere," so please make me feel safe to live here and please, please let them feel safe. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Alyssa, I, I have 780 people standing behind me right now that you can't see, Bettin and Stearns County progressives, that's us, and what I'm here to say is, I want you to think about your hometown pride days and I want you to think about a better picture of it, like a picture where everybody is together, a picture where everybody feels allowed to be themselves and out and connected. And what I've known from the last year is once you get people to start working together, you make the most beautiful things happen. You make, you make people feel welcome, you make children see that everybody belongs. The choices that you're making tonight are going to affect the children of this town and your community, we're all watching, you know, we have the ears of legislators right now and, and I don't know if you understand how important tonight is because the people who have spoken now, we have, there are several of us who have lots of people behind us and we're willing to go to bat for the Robinsons. When I heard... Like, I'm not a, I'm not a violent person, I'm not, but when I heard what happened to them, I felt like there, if that happened to my family, oh, you better believe I'd be out there and, and fighting for this. Honestly, instead of, and I'm gonna bring it back to May, instead of really taking an advantage of an eye-opening experience with the Snapchat, a child on that was awarded the Rorory Pride Award and that, I think, probably more than anything pissed both, a lot of our moms, moms off, I think, because every one of us, because had my child been that child who did that to someone else, I'd want that award taken away, I'd want that public apology from that child because this is not about Snapchat, this is not about one child, you are setting a precedent for what could happen in this community and you're, and if you do right by the Robinsons and if we all do right by them, what a welcoming, beautiful thing that would be and you'd be bringing the light to this community that they have and that so many of your other residents have. I just want you to think about the children in this community because we're seeing what happens when they're brought up wrong, when we're brought up hating people, when they're brought up thinking they're better than other people, when they're brought up believing that somehow, somehow they're gonna be, something's gonna be taken away from them if we allow people to be in our lives and allow people to be who they are. And we're also seeing people who are brought up to be kind and generous and helping and that's been the most beautiful part of this entire journey is seeing, I mean, how many people are here, does anyone know because it's standing room only out there? Eight thousand, okay. I believe, maybe not really eight thousand, but I do believe that we have that support behind us and I, I just want you to know that this is not all the people who are supporting the Robinsons right now. Thank you.
My name is Amy Hunter and my husband and I moved to this community six years ago because we wanted to retire to the lake and we came here because it was geographically between our children who live to the west here and our children who are in the Twin Cities area so that we could enjoy retirement. When I moved here, I felt personally as an outsider, no matter what I did, and I am a white woman of Protestant background and I felt unwelcome here, I can't imagine how Jane felt coming here as a Jewish woman. And I know this community has a huge Hispanic population and people say, "Well, they don't cause any trouble," they're afraid to say anything, they're treated like trash. The way people talk about the Hispanic community, the way people talk about Somalis, and this has gone to a head because Andrea dared to speak up in defense of her family. This is not something that happened just in the last 83 days or in the last year at the school, this has been going on, I've heard person after person after person tell me about how their children have been treated at the school, I know, I see how people are treated in the community. And, and I'm here to say that I will stand and use my white privilege to make sure that every person in this community's voice is heard and has a place to call home here.
Hi there, my name is Britten, my pronouns are she/her and I live in St. Cloud. My partner and I have spent the last couple of years figuring out what will our exit from St. Cloud look like, where we live, and towns like this is really one of the places we want to live, because I grew up in Nebraska, I love rural, small-town, I feel safe here. But the reason I feel safe here is the same reason my cousin who's black doesn't. But I actually wanted to talk about something more important. My friend Sierra talked about how some of you don't look as uncomfortable as you should be and I recognize that and I understand that, but I want to be very clear, we live in a world that teaches us that white people are better. Even if no one sat you down and said, "You are better, you deserve more because you are white," you are taught that, I am taught that. Every person in this room is taught on some level that their whiteness or lack of whiteness either deserve, gives them something that they deserve that they didn't work for, by the way, or that they deserve hate or discomfort because they're different. And the other thing that white supremacy teaches us, that again, we have all learned, even if we are uncomfortable with using the word white supremacy, because we think of people like KKK members, when really we should be thinking about the police who let this happen. When, when we're raised in a society that teaches us that white people deserve something better, that we deserve something better even though we have done shit all to deserve it, and that our history shows us that we don't deserve it because of how we have treated other community members, we are raised to believe that these things happen, that they just happen, right? And then the other thing that we are encouraged to do is, especially as white people, we're encouraged to remove ourselves from that conversation, to think about it in these very big abstract ways, right? But as a queer woman, my liberation is tied to the liberation of black people. As someone who has known what it's like to be followed in the, in the stores because my partner looks like someone who shouldn't who has known what it's like to be followed in the, in the stores because my partner looks like someone who shouldn't be my partner, I know what it's like. And when this family actually gets the respect and the healing and the support they deserve from this community, everyone else can't. The most important thing about white supremacy is it teaches us that we do not have things in common. And that when we do find those moments of commonality, when we do feel what it feels like to have our children threatened, we are taught that we should just hold back, right? We should just kind of, you know, tamper it down and, and let other people feel their emotions. But I need all of you to feel that. You're gonna walk out of this room like many politicians, and I know this because I work with them and I love them, and I know what it's like to sit in a difficult meeting. You're gonna walk out and wanna say, okay, let's, let's kind of decompress. Let's move on, right? But what I actually need you to do is do the opposite of what white supremacists teachings teach us, right? Is I need you to sit in it. I need you to think about how you felt in this moment today. I need you to think about how you would feel if your family was the target. And I don't need you to sit in this like, what if this and what if that and what are other things that we aren't considering? No, this is racism. And this is prejudice. And this is an example of what happens when we as community members do not identify and root out white supremacy. It is easier to run from this, I understand. It is so much easier as a white person to just not pay attention to this. But y'all are fucking leaders. Y'all are people who lead this community. It is your turn to sit in this discomfort like this family has and like everyone else who is not welcome in this community, but don't feel safe enough to tell you. So think about it. And, and take the time to think about it. Thank you.
I'm gonna keep my mask on. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay, I'm gonna try to speak up. Um, is that any better? Okay. Hi, my name is Hannah Fusi. I am a educator in St. Cloud, Minnesota. So I just wanted to come up here. As I've been kind of sitting back there, I've been making a list of action steps for my classroom this fall. So I just wanted to come up here and share what those are gonna be. And then call you guys to hopefully be making a similar list as we're all speaking and as everybody spoke. Thank you for speaking. Yeah, so my first action step is gonna be to start conversations with my coworkers at my school this fall. Those conversations are important even if they're uncomfortable. So I hope that they're super uncomfortable, but also really productive. My next response is, or my next step is gonna be to ask my administration for what their response is to this occurrence, this devastating occurrence. I'm so sorry, Sir Robinson family. I'm so sorry. And then also discuss with my administration like how we support the St. Cloud community, like the greater Stearns County community, the Cold Spring community, because I'm sure that they know people who've been affected or who are in this community. And then my last step is, if any conversation in my classroom, I will for sure be having conversation about the difference of intention versus impact. And also the difference of words versus action. Because for my sixth graders, that will be really important for them to start learning that. And I hope they've been having those conversations, but I will do that in my classroom in St. Cloud. Thank you.
If I can just give a quick addition about hate speech and such, I know that this weekend, we're going to be having the Friends of the Public Library book sale at Lyons Park. And I know last year, many of us were made rather uncomfortable by the Trump flag flying right adjoining. And I know that by, I believe it's state law, that election signs and all of that should be down. Well, it's, we're well past the November 2020 election. And so we would appreciate some action from the city in that regard.
Is there anybody else? Gary, go ahead.
You know what? Throughout this evening, I watched one person in the audience. And I am very, very concerned about this person. And I believe that this person has some things to say and probably desperately wants to say those things. But I have a feeling she might be reluctant because I've watched her cry throughout, throughout almost this entire evening. And, and I, I know I'm gonna put her on the spot, but I'm going to ask her if she would please go up to that microphone and tell us what she's thinking. And that's you right there. You've gotta do it. And, and I don't care if it takes a half hour for you to get through it, but do it.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jacqueline Umerzki. I am the daughter of Andrea and Phil and a sibling of the children who were in the home the night Benton fire decided to crash a car into my family's home. I just wanted to start by saying that I had a really rough childhood. My mom was a single mom for the most of the, for most of my life and we moved a lot. We didn't have a permanent spot to call home. So when my parents told us they finally bought a home and we'd have a place to lay our roots and just a place to call home for real. And I think the most exciting thing was being able to paint my bedroom. I had asked for like 14 years, like, please, Mom, we can paint it white again. But it doesn't work like that with rentals. And I moved away from central Minnesota a few years ago. And after I moved, I said, I would never come back because of the lack of inclusion and the lack of the feeling of safety for my own siblings. As a white person, I have more privilege than my own stepfather and my own siblings have. And I know that nothing I feel or go through will amount to what they have survived and have yet to survive through this lifetime. But to be a firsthand witness of that has been very heartbreaking for the last 17 years. Knowing that my opportunities and successes will be amounted to more than theirs potentially will because of the color of my skin has been so painful. But I just, I don't know, I want all of you guys to do something and to act on it. And I haven't been able to sleep at night, you know, not for 83 days, but for years now because these babies, they just have such a different life than I do. And I don't know how to rationalize that or cope with it, I guess. And I just want them to be okay. All I can think about is my mom and I sitting on this stoop while she smokes because teenagers are really, really hard. She's trying to catch a break. Or my mom and I sitting there watching our dogs run around like crazy and bother every runner and walker who comes by. I apologize for that. I think about my brother and sister coming home at 5:00 AM because we can't sleep and we just wanna come home to our mom and dad. All of that at 5:00 AM. We all could have been out there. It could have been any of my siblings. And I told my boss at work that I was gonna come home and the first question they asked me is, "Should you go?" Because now they're questioning the safety of me when it wasn't really a problem before. I guess I don't know what else to say. Just please be here. Don't be silent. Act on it. It's really hard. You know, it's really hard to be a girl and be 15, but to be brown too is even harder in a world that works against you, so... Please just give them a safe place and just allow our home to be home. Thank you.
My name is Mary Maliter and I, my husband is Bill. I have just recently gotten to know the Robinsons. I've just recently gotten to know the Robinsons since the incident that I heard about at the Recoree schools, this district's Snapchats that this student and students sent to this beautiful young woman. I had gone to the school board and asked them early on when we had the Confederate flag hanging across from the school to somehow come up with some type of statement saying that they did not condone that and that their children would, at the school would be protected and they would not stand for that kind of thing in our community as a school. They did not do that. They would not say a word about it. That upset me. I wrote to the school board. I wrote to our superintendent, Calvinton. And my response was, "We will look at this matter at a future date." It never did. Never was on the agenda. Never was talked about. So, last fall, I went to the school board and read a statement telling them about different incidences that has been occurring at this Recoree School District for years. And asked them to somehow come up with a plan that would combat racism in our schools for all brown and black people. Nothing happened. Nothing happened. Then I find out that this Snapchat is sent. I took that same statement back to that school and handed each one of those members on the school board a copy of what I had said. And then I read it. And still, even after Andrea got up and spoke about what had occurred to her daughter, nothing happened. They have not recognized this at all as something that they should have been doing better at. They haven't said anything. They continue to not say anything. I want people in this community to put pressure on this school board. We elected this school board. It is no excuse to say it has to be confidential. We can't talk about it. That is bullshit. They should not... Our superintendent should not get to tell people that are teachers and on staff not to talk about it in their groups of teachers meeting together. They, he's actually told them this and that their jobs would be in jeopardy. Can you believe that? These are awesome teachers that want to speak up and support all kids at this school. And they're told this. They can't say anything. Instead, in fact, with the internal investigation now, they are still being told that. It's crazy. These kids that are saying these racist things and sending these horrible Snapchats and on the football field saying these horrible things to opponents when they're down in the line because they might be black is unacceptable. Why are these coaches allowing this? Why is our superintendent talking about critical race theory and how we're not gonna talk about that instead of addressing the systemic racism in our school? And talking to our community about how they're gonna change that? That all started. This would not have happened to them had the school done something in the first place. This cannot happen. It's not gonna stop. These are our kids. Our kids are being taught systemic racism when they've got people that are telling them to say things to other kids or they're not doing anything when things are said to these other kids. Or they are pouring white powder on someone's hair on the bus and they are saying, "Oh, it's the bus responsibility." They don't take any accountability for any of it. They need to. And I would like, at the next school board meeting, there, it would be a great idea if somebody from our city council could come and look them in the eye and tell them, "We're watching you too." We are all watching. They need to be held accountable for that incident. She has never been apologized to. Her family has never been apologized to for that. And now we have a man who thought he could just do whatever he wanted to and run into their home. That's how far it got. Please. We gotta do something. We gotta do something over at that school too. It starts with these kids. They cannot learn systemic racism.
My name is Olivia Williams. My mom, this is my mom, my dad, my sibling. When I first started going to school here, I didn't have friends for like my whole elementary life living here. I don't think I ever had a sleepover my whole time being in elementary school living out here. I thought it was just because people didn't like me. But I never thought it would get to this point. My little brother was in the house, in the living room, and he could have got killed by that truck. And my family is probably one of the most important things to me. So just knowing that, like, that's sick. Like, that's so gross. Like, I don't know how you guys, you guys have more power than we do and nothing has been done. It still was the same. Our house still was targeted. Our family was targeted. And I don't think that's okay at all. I was never taught to put people out because of the way they looked or the way they acted or the color of their skin. And I just don't think that's okay. So me standing here, I want action taken by people who can do more than I can. And that's all I have to say.
Is there anybody else for a public forum? Gary, again.
I'm sorry.
I mean, I could, I could add a bunch of stuff, too.
Where's the lady that spoke before their daughter?
Just, I think she was out there.
You said something that I've been thinking about on and off throughout the evening. I thought about it yesterday when I visited with a couple for about an hour and a half. They had a very nice mood. If there is one thing that aggravates the hell out of you, and I've got goosebumps when I say it, is how often, as elected officials, people will come to us and they need our help. And we're willing to help. And we run into this gigantic brick wall called confidentiality. Damn, that gets me mad because I can't get around it. Well, that's confidential. This is confidential. This is confidential. This is confidential. And it immediately stops me in my tracks and I can't get anybody to tell me anything. And so I can't help people like you think that I could or we could help you. We run into it all the time with all types of agencies, with all types of organizations and groups. And I can tell you what, I'll go to school with all of you and I'd have to think about what I'd say, but I'll go up there fired up and I'll demand some answers. I will. I'll do it. I don't have any doubt that any one of these people would go with me. We don't like this. We hate this. This is wrong. I mean, I could talk for two hours how I feel about this. But you know what I'm going to run into there, just like so many other places? Confidential. Oh, give me a break. How are we supposed to make things better and make positive change in this community if we run into that brick wall every time we try to get involved and do something? And then people say, "I didn't do any good to talk to that person." They don't care. It's got nothing to do with caring. Yes, ma'am.
Can I just say, that is a tool that they use.
Oh, absolutely. I know it is.
That you want to use and you do not have to stand for that. They don't have to keep it. What's so bad about telling what happened?
I have personally, at the beginning, I had personally contacted the superintendent a number of times and he did respond to me. And at the time, I even offered to give assistance in helping to create something or anything with them. And then that kind of got done and then he sent a little email out and that was it and that was done. So, I hadn't seen anything since then and, but I, you know, I still have my contact information. I still have the email that I contacted him with and I was very angry. And I'm very angry now and I don't want you to say that, like, so I sit here and, like, I see my sister over there and Andrea, like, I know people and I don't know people and y'all are emotional and I'm trying to keep my composure because that's what I'm supposed to do, right? But this situation sucks. This is bullshit. And it has for so long.
Let me interrupt. I will be the first to say that we need help. I'm not in any way, shape, or form. If you people don't step up and give us help, well, this is going nowhere. I mean, I've lived here my entire life. Seventy years old I am. I've lived here forever. And if I wouldn't have taken a break from cleaning our house yesterday because I was tired, to look at my email and then I saw some things on Facebook because I look at that, and all of a sudden, I think it was KNSI, had some article about this, and I watched the video of your radio interview. I'm embarrassed to say, I had absolutely no idea that any of this was happening to that family.
It's privileged.
Honest to God. And thirty minutes after I watched it, I came up and thanked God you were sitting outside and we had a wonderful conversation. I'm still blown away by the things that were done. I cannot understand why an individual like that wasn't locked up, hasn't gone through a psychological evaluation. Certainly, a sane person would never do anything like that.
That's white privilege. That is white privilege right there. Black people do not get mental health checkups. They don't get anything like that. They get thrown in the jail. But please don't help us.
No, no, I was talking...
Let me point something out, though. About three years ago, this city council voted down a permit for an apartment building that wanted to go up north of town because racist people in this town came in here and pushed you to do it. We're saying things like, "We don't want those people," meaning Somalis from St. Cloud living in our town. We don't want them here. And you caved to that.
Well, I would like to clarify something. I hope you understood when I talked about the individual that did all of this and why that person's not in jail or, I guess at the moment is.
He doesn't need a mental evaluation. He's perfectly sane. He knows he's doing right from wrong. He knows right from wrong. He's a white supremacist racist, proud boy, whatever you want to do it, but he's racist. He's wrong.
He knows he's going to get away with it. Nobody in the house is going to prosecute him. He's protected today by you and the law enforcement. They do whatever they want. That's why this stuff is happening all over the nation. Do something about it.
Again, we need your help and I don't know who of you is willing to help.
We're here. We're here.
We need to have a meeting.
I work nine by three.
We need to have a meeting with you folks, whoever is interested. We need to sit down and talk about this. You need to help us. Everyone that went up there basically said, "You need to help us. You need to help us." I need to understand specifically what type of help is needed. I will commit myself to helping anyone I can here. I told those two people yesterday, I gave them my card. I said, "If you ever need my help, you call me seven days a week, 365 days a year, I don't care when it is." And I can tell you, the rest of these people would say the same thing. We need to get involved. You're damn right we do. But we need to have you help us get involved in the right way.
Because we want to do it right.
We need your help.
It's called creativity.
Pardon me?
It's called creativity. I live in a world where people want my confidentiality that I get to hold because the clients that I serve are under confidentiality. I don't give out anything. But I will tell you this, if someone wants something, they will get it. They will get it. They will put a detailed subpoena together to get it. So, detail, be creative. If you want to do something, you can do it. Everybody in here, if they want to do something, would be able to do it. You put a detailed subpoena together if you want some piece of confidentiality. Because when I get that subpoena, I get to bow down to them.
He has more access to all this information. Our chief of police has more access to information than any of us have.
And I think it would be, and I think it would be a meeting that we could have with him, obviously, that is for sure.
I was going to say that you need help. Minnesota Department of Human Rights, I can connect you with them, who can connect you with Keith Ellison, who can connect you to the governor. This has to be the way we go. We pay taxes for that stuff so it can help this family. And there are state organizations who would line up to help you guys. So feel free to ask me, I can give you contacts.
Give me your contact.
Who are you?
That's Natalie.
Oh, okay. Okay. Yep, yep. I know.
Well, I'm just tired of this. I don't mean this conversation. I just mean what I've been hearing this evening is so upsetting. And I totally agree with all of you. We have got to do something and goddamn it, we're going to do it. I don't know what it is yet, but we're going to do it.
And you know what? My stomach's been turning all day. I talked about it with everybody at work because we wanted, we had that uncomfortable situation, you know, conversations. And I even texted my sister and said, and had a discussion about how, how am I going to, like, how am I going to say the right, the right things and still, you know, like, be respected or whatever the case may be? But I just, you know what? In my heart, like I said, this is bullshit. I, you guys, you're wonderful people. Wonderful kids. No one deserves to be treated this way.
Is it a good time to do, make a motion to get something going? Get a start on?
We could have a meeting with...
I was hoping you were going to do that after we actually heard.
Yes, actually. I just thought as long as, as long as we're like real close to this and then they can talk after, I don't care. But if we can...
We're going to make the motion regardless.
Regardless.
We'll talk a lot.
Oh, they're going to make, they're going to talk. I don't care.
I'll make the motion, but then help me put the proper words in place so that we do the right thing the first time.
You know, you talk about confidentiality. You're talking about a specific person who did a specific illegal action. You can't talk about the details of it. We're talking about a systemic issue in the community.
I understand that.
So, when you say you're stopped by confidentiality, yes, maybe you can't talk about details about what happened in this certain case or how this person's being prosecuted or not. But as leaders of this community, leaders of the school board, leaders of the faith communities, we all have a responsibility to come together as a community to educate each other and to support each other and to make sure that we are moving in a positive direction to be a welcoming community.
Now, if you're going to... Should we wait till after?
I believe you have to break through the wall of confidentiality. What would happen is tomorrow...
Wait, wait, wait. One second, one second. Ranking confidentiality has nothing to do with denouncing racism, right?
I totally agree with you. But we're talking about the school and all the problems that are having with this.
But that's why, but that's still, the exact issue she's saying here has nothing to do with denouncing racism in your community.
All you need to do is walk in that school or any school in central Minnesota and start asking the kids and they're going to tell you.
You know, that's a great idea because when I think about going, I think of the superintendent. But that's what we need to be able to have access to, to understand specifically what the problems are. So then, with your help, we can get together and try to figure out, okay, where's the starting point? What can we do to do better with this? We can't keep going this direction. We all agree with that.
Talk to the teachers who are told they can't talk about it or teach about it. Talk to the teachers up there. I'm sure there's some teachers in this room here who can hook you up with a group of teachers.
Natalie.
The superintendent, when I talked to the superintendent, he said, from a Unite Cloud board perspective, "First reparations for the Robinson family and then we will bring the full force of our education and our speaking team here and help the community." No, he didn't do it. Not only that, but what someone said, "Will, have you come out if you don't come, Natalie? Because you're too controversial." Bullshit. I don't care if anybody thinks anything about me, but if I, as a white woman, can't come to your community because I'm too controversial, I'm not blaming anybody else here because I don't know you, but it's that insidious behind the scenes, like, boy, I know what I'm going to piss off if we bring Unite Cloud here. That has to stop.
Exactly.
Don't bring me, I don't care. Bring somebody. Good Lord.
We had a unity meeting down at Frytown and we had a group of people come and hear each other talk about what unity meant to them. I got comments from outside that if Unite Cloud has anything to do with this, it's a bad thing. So, that was spread all over the internet. Our representatives even went online and called them out as being some type of terrorist It is ridiculous how far that had gone, how far this systemic racism goes. It's crazy in this, in this town, in this area to say that they, you know, and I wanted to say to them, she was there that night and they never even knew it. No one knew it because she stood in the background and we all talked and she did not cause a terroristic incident. One other thing I'd like to see is, where is our school board tonight? Where are those members? Why aren't they here?
Did you have...
Games going on over there.
Yeah. Did you have something to say?
Where are they?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I used to go to Stride Candy, St. Cloud, and like, there was at least three to four black children there and I actually had a lot of fun with them. But, but after a couple of years, when the principal changed, the student, the black students started disappearing and eventually we moved to Peansville and there's barely any black students there. And I don't know why, but there should be at least some of them. That's all I got.
Well, let me just notice something that you didn't notice because there's, you shouldn't have been surprised. You shouldn't have been, I'm not surprised in all of this. And I live quite a ways away, I remember from twenty years ago, that it's like this and I, that's the way I grew up. I grew up that only black kid in my school in Maplewood, Wayback Way. And it's a difficult road, but there's no reason you shouldn't be able to see it. You shouldn't put all the burden on the people of color and the black people and the other people who are, who love those people in order to see these things. Right now, you are focusing on this one man and his horrendous act, which is, which needs to be dealt with. But like I said, that being dealt with should be easy. It's a clear cut thing. What you need to start working on is talking to your community about it and finding out to prevent the next thing from happening. And everybody has talked about how the Latina people are treated here. So you need to figure out something with that, too, and how to talk and how to find out what's going on with them. And you need to make this a welcoming place for everybody. Otherwise, it's going to keep happening again and again and again. Simone Biles just said to stop the Olympics because of her mental health. You know, that's because, I mean, it's been hard to be a black person this last year. This last year has been even harder. And, and she also has her, the issues of trying to hold up the whole nation and represent the nation when they don't treat people that look like her as a human being all the time. You know, that's not even to mention what she's trying to do to bring attention to the sexual, the sexual things that she had happened to her. You know, and you can't just ask for help if you're not willing to go out and try and start and try and do something. There are a lot of people here. They're all willing to help you. And you need to talk to them and you need to find out what's going on. You need to find out what is happening. You need to ask them, the other people that they know who have had similar things, and you need to go around and ask and find out that way. Because people, it's hard if somebody, if you're, if you're just living your life trying to survive, it's hard to then fight for your rights as well, to be equal. I'm forty-three years old. It took me a long time. It took me a long time to be able to do this. You know, and, and the young woman who spoke, who says she didn't have friends and she thought, and she thought that it was, you know, I was her. I was her. And you have to know what's going on in your community, not just with the wealthy people, wealthy white people that come to you and ask for things for their business. You need to know what's happening in your community.
I'm just going to piggyback off of what she said. White people, whether inadvertently or blatantly, we created this system of racism and we are the ones that are supposed to step out and make that change. We can't put it on the backs of people of color, right? That's not their job. It's our job to be uncomfortable, to step out, to say, you know, to speak up and to go and make the changes. And we, it starts in our own home. It starts here.
That's what, that's what happened at school. They're asking, you know, people, these kids of color to come forward and tell their story. They need to ask, and, and why is this always put on the kids? Why are the adults not being, asking these questions? Because they can't talk. Because they've been told that they cannot talk about what's going on at school by their superintendent. We have an opening at that Riquory, in the Riquory School District, for a new high school principal. We need to somehow figure out how we can have someone in that school that will take the lead and address these issues. We need, you know, wouldn't it be awesome to have a woman of color, or a man of color in that position?
Yes, yes.
To understand and not be, you know, subjected to stupid comments from other people. Or he could stand up, or she could stand up. This is, um, people just got an email saying that, that they need to rush into picking this principal, because time is of the essence of school just starting. If they rush, how long, how far is that gonna go out to get applications from people outside of the community? Which is what I feel personally they need.
Did you have something? Go ahead.
I just wanted to say, it's not just at the middle school and high school. This is happening in our elementary school. I have a daughter who just finished kindergarten, and there were parents, several parents, who contacted the principal because he was gonna read a book that said, "All are welcome here." And he mentioned George Floyd because Governor Walz had asked for a moment of silence, and that elementary school did not participate in it. And he apologized in his email and said, you know, "I'm gonna read this book, we're gonna talk about it, we care about George Floyd, we care, his life mattered." And parents were in an uproar. This is not just teenagers, it is not teenagers being teenagers. This is a problem all the way through our school system. And you need to know that.
Hi, I'm Erin Bonito. My husband Chris and I have been a Cold Spring residents for 17 years. I'm coming into this late. I'm late because we were on vacation, a family vacation in Chicago. Our two children are black. And so many Minnesotans go, you know, up to the lake for a vacation, or they go to a friend's cabin for vacation, they go to a state park for vacation. Our family goes to places like Chicago, and Miami, and Detroit to get away from the very hard looks and stares that my children, who are born and raised in this town, receive in this town. Now, do they have friends? Yes. Do they have teachers who support them, adore them? Yes. Do they have coaches who support them? Yes. Do they have adults in their lives who cherish them? Yes. But it doesn't take away what it is to not be able to ride your bike around town without somebody coming out in their front porch and looking at you like this. And they don't do it to the white kid. It's hard to be black here. Our family hasn't experienced a fraction of what this family has experienced. But we're driving halfway across the country so our kids can go, huh, and breathe, and be on vacation, and get a feeling they can't get in the town where they have been raised. If someone puts someone, something in our mailbox that says, "We're gonna hang you up, we're gonna hang you up in a tree," someone puts something ugly on our front lawn, I want every one of you to say to me, "Yes." Our police department will come and protect your children. You're citizens here, and you deserve that protection. And I'm afraid, based on what we've seen, that we can't count on that full protection. So, we're back in Cold Spring. We're planted here, we wanna make a life here. Help us do that.
By the way, we're gonna move on with our meeting. Their agenda number five, so... But we have to approve the agenda first. I need approval for the amended agenda. Gary makes a motion to approve. How about a second?
A second, Doug.
Shannon seconds it. Any discussion on it, otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Consent agenda. Recommendation to approve the consent agenda as presented. I need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion.
Doug makes a motion. How about a second?
I'll second.
Shannon seconds it. Any discussion, otherwise, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Number five, request to address the council. Andrea Robinson. Have a seat up there. Yep. If you can sit, I hope you can get up there and sit down. Phil, did you wanna go up there with her? Absolutely can.
Andrea, bring it down to your table. Yep. My name is Andrea Robinson. Many of you recognize me, and my husband Felipe is advocating against racism in school and in the community. In addressing the school board, I stated I will forever have the image of my children lynched, etched in my mind. Today, I come before you with the image of a truck barreling towards my home, the sound of which makes me physically sick. Currently outside our home is armed patrol. It is not that of local law enforcement. Their presence, for the most part, has disappeared. In fact, Saturday morning, after Benton Byer attempted to kill my family, the Cold Spring police abandoned us, stayed in, and referenced the woods across the street. We know he's in there. Let me repeat this again. We were abandoned with a dangerous criminal that drove a truck into our home. Benton Byer is behind bars due to the quick and selfless action of Danielle Hoffman. She is the wife of one of, um, our firefighters. She's also one of our neighbors. Danielle saw him run from the woods. She chased him and cornered him at the splash pad until the police arrived. She deserves acknowledgement by city council. I'll be the first to say that it should never have gotten this far. Gary came flying up to my house like a bat out of hell yesterday, and, not knowing who he was, and I think his exact words when he came up was, "What the hell?" And he, he had just watched the interview that we had given. And I did not know until that moment that the city council did not know everything that occurred. And that, that is a huge issue. There, there should have been no confidentiality in the aspect that we've had two broken windows, we've had our security shot at with an airsoft gun. We've been stocked for 83 days. I have barely slept for 83 nights. We have a total of eight cameras. I have to turn the notifications off on my phone because I cannot sleep. One of the most recent incidents was the fact that Benton Byer called 911, stating a black man was threatening him with a knife. That man was my husband, and that occurred outside of my own home. When the police arrived, my husband was treated like a suspect. And Benton Byer was not arrested. Two days before the incident, I asked the chief to review that case, and he did assure me the city attorney would as well. I asked that, and reiterated that someone in my family would be hurt or killed. A day and a half later, a truck came into the front of my home. Quite frankly, we felt abandoned by school administrators and police. And we've also consistently questioned where our community leaders were. If you are shocked, you should not be. You should not be shocked. Your city attorney, a contract attorney, a private attorney, opted not to press charges. If you were ever under the impression this was a school issue, there is a significant problem within leadership at the city, at a variety of levels. With that being said, it's very easy for me to point out what went wrong and what we could do better. I had a significant amount of time to think what we could do. And, and part of my time, my master's degree with public administration, I did a lot of research, and I did a variety of papers on shared services. One of the biggest issues that exists is the fact that we have Stearns County sheriff who has a very large capability, and then we have a police department, and I'm not seeing those agencies interact. And that is a problem. Our city attorney and our county attorney have taken a very different stance on pressing charges, including going back on charges that were not filed by the city attorney. Our officers did arrest Benton Byer on felony assault. We found out yesterday, the county attorney opted not to charge with felony assault. Immediately before coming here, I did, um, speak with Keith Ellison. If you aren't familiar with him, he's the Attorney General. He is more than willing to go forward and press secondary assault charges. He can't take a case from the county attorney. He can simply call there, likely will be giving a call here tomorrow as well. The governor has to tell the Attorney General when he is the one on the case. While most of the community is enjoying hometown pride days, we're gonna be at home alone, trying to rebuild our house. I simply ask at this point that each of you take the time to reach out to the governor and request that the Attorney General take on the case. Going forward, I would like community leader, or city leadership to take time and reflect on how things went. I would like myself and my husband to be involved in a meeting with city leadership. And going forward, I think, going forward, there needs to be a path on how we will work together at a variety of different agency levels. Because as it stands, I mean, Keith Ellison in one call, obviously was able to, the FBI, Washington DC, the state, involved. Because my understanding is that none of these were reported as hate crimes. I am not sure that I have a whole lot else to say aside from thanking everyone for coming here. I thought that we would, we would be alone. And it has been an incredibly hard journey, but one that I will, um... You guys have to stop crying, because you make me cry more. I mean, like, I can't make, I got, there's nothing like a mom looking at her kids and they're crying. I, I am here for you guys, and I'm here for the rest of the community, and I need the rest of the community to be here for us too. I have one more request, but if the chief is back there, if he could step in, potentially. I need to request, like, regular scheduled patrols out of my house. We are not safe.
We have been doing, we've had officers out there on marked squad cars.
Excellent. Thank you.
Zapala, over.
Thank you, everyone.
we as a, we as a community need to do something to, uh, take action on this, and I guess the first step is, is getting the city to start working on doing something, getting a, getting a committee together, getting something together, getting, doing something. I don't, we're not sure what we're gonna do yet, but, um, but we want, we need to get something going.
I mean, I see, maybe we just, at first, maybe we just have a, like, a meeting with just us, just to have brainstorming ideas on what we think might be good ideas to move forward. We can maybe, you know, come together, or take some, maybe if there's a chance that, you know, some people could, if you wanna email ideas, or, you know, if there's something where you could email resources to us, that might be an option. You know, something where, but I think that we just need to sit and brainstorm, and decompress, and think about everything that's going on, and really talk about how we're actually gonna do something. Because I am not the school board.
No. And I would like to...
I wanna do something.
And I would like to suggest, for your consideration, that if we have what we call a work session, and I think that's what you're talking about, probably.
Yeah.
But I'd like to suggest that Andrea and Phil, and maybe a couple of other people, be part of that right from the beginning.
You do.
Because the lady back there, I mean, now, there she is, with the white knit shirt, she said some things that, that to me is right on, and, and it's gonna be hard, I think, for us to keep what she said in clear focus, because it's so easy to kinda get sidetracked. You know, I was talking about the individual that's been giving you problems, and, and she kind of reminded me that it's a lot bigger than that. So, when I say we need some help from you people, that's the kind of thing I'm talking about. Help us to stay on track so that we go down the right trail. Otherwise, it's very easy for us to, you know, have a brainstorming session and think we've got a whole bunch of ideas, and, and then when we start to talk about those ideas in the community, a lot of people might say, "What the hell are you talking about?" You know? So, that's what I'm suggesting, if it's okay with everyone, is we get some of these folks to help us stay on track.
Those, those two guys also have to be there. Okay.
I do have a recommendation.
Yeah, please.
To, having the workshop and the brainstorming, I think you may need more of a workshop to take time to discuss about what you brought in. But I think the community needs more action external right now. So, an option could be, would be to make a motion for an ad hoc committee, like we used to have, like the heritage or the planning. We have two members sit on it, um, and establish that, and then have that committee be responsible for reaching out to not just the city of Cold Spring or Riquory, but Riquory is eight townships and three cities. And it's not just the city of Cold Spring. And so, having some sort of gathering with that group. We used to have the fifth Monday, we don't anymore, but August has a fifth Monday. So, it'd be, and that, for all of you who, I don't know if you know this, fifth Monday was city councils, planning commissions, EDAs, and school board. And they just, and legislative leaders to talk about what's going on in their communities. So, there's a fifth Monday in August that could be a time to... So, there's a 5th Monday in August that could be a time to bring all of those communities who haven't had these discussions, who are part of this Rurkori area together. I mean, that's an option. It wouldn't be till August 29th or 30th.
Is there something that we could do immediately?
Yes. Doug.
First, thank you all for coming here tonight. It's eye opening to me. But we're talking about having a work session. I would love to have a work session because I'm about ready to explode. I am so pissed off. Gary made the comment that, this YouTube video, that is the first damn time I've heard this stuff is going on. And to my, I must be living under a rock. But for me to have to see that video, to what's going on, and not being, as an elected official up here, we don't get any insight that this is going on and our police have been involved and other people have been involved. And we as council managers not elected, don't get a phone call or an email that this is going on, is BS. I want to, I want, and Gary knows me well enough, that's where I am. And when I, I'll just tell what's on my mind, and that's what's on my mind. It just appalls me that we as elected officials have not been told this crap has been going on. Just pisses me off. And I'll stop right there.
Doug, he doesn't live under a rock. He's all over this community, so, I mean, really.
I don't, I don't understand how I did not know this was going on.
That's how we, we thought that you guys avoided us.
No, not at all.
We thought you were at the point of moving because how, 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 how could it have not been shared with you? And so, when Gary talked, I was just, what?
I mean, lots of questions. Why, why, why has the attorney not filed charges? Why did they drop charges? I guess that's a question I have. I got a lot of questions.
And what's the attorney been doing? I have no idea.
Unbelievable.
Investigate them all.
I'll stop there.
I just want to make sure, I hope you're ready for the backlash.
I'll tell you what.
We will help you.
We're used to backlash.
This is not a public, public here, but go ahead if it's a quick one.
Very quick. And we're talking about workshops and so forth. I think that's great, and you don't know quite the direction that takes. I think it'll create itself. I think you committed to that. One of the gals said, "It doesn't take anything to make a statement." I think you have an opportunity to expand on the statement that you made and say, and call it out as a hate crime, and that you're asking the governor to look into it.
Yep, just make a motion to urge the governor to review the matter for, to the Attorney General.
That's going to, that, that part of it's going to take time. The, helping them, we can do right away. But the rest of it is going to take time to get everything.
So, Bridget, help me structure this properly. So, I would make a motion that...
The governor?
The mayor or the city of Cold Spring.
I think the council.
The screw.
The council.
Yes.
What, that we contact the governor, that we call the governor, what?
I think you just urge the governor to refer to the, to the Attorney General, and then I'll send.
You can send a, something to them.
Yeah, that you have, a letter, that I'll have the mayor sign.
Okay. And as I typically do, that's my motion.
Yep. Refer to the Attorney General, I said that.
I need a second.
What's seconded?
Doug seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Did you want to set up an ad hoc committee now, or do you want to wait?
Can you, can you draw it up tomorrow morning and then call me and I can come sign it? Because I'm going camping after that, so.
Did you want us?
In the heat.
About the ad hoc committee?
Huh?
Tell us, when, tell us what you need and when you want us there.
Right.
Send Sunday?
I mean, as far as the city.
Well, they have insurance that's going to have to get through the process first.
So, can you let us know?
Absolutely. I, you know what? That would be the right time to come together. Anyone that wants to help us rip those boards out and put the ones up, I'm game.
Okay. Is that Sunday then? Or not yet?
Get find out with the insurance.
That dumpster's been there, but yes.
Can we put an ad in the paper or something?
You knew anyone in the paper.
I work for labor. Oh, man, I know a lot of trades. So, I will talk with them, let me start there. And then you'll go put a post up.
Okay.
Do you want to go on his camping trip?
It's a tent. I'm in a tent. And there's no air conditioning in it.
Ew, awful. That would be awful.
But you are actually welcome if you want to come up.
So, Bridget, so we've accomplished that. Now, as far as having some type of a meeting to start generating ideas on how we approach proceedings of all of this, I really, I think you maybe mentioned it, I would really rather not wait until the end of August. I'd rather do something as soon as possible while it's fresh in our minds. We have to keep going at this. We can't just let it disappear.
Yep. Maybe the ad hoc committee, and then they sit down with me, and we draft up an invitation to the community at large.
Is there anything that we could do at hometown pride days that could educate anybody or educate the community?
We're probably not ready for that.
I know, I know. It would be really fast, and it would be...
Would you all be on the flow with Black Lives Matter?
There isn't, there isn't a parade. So, it's not a parade. But I'm just trying to think of something that, that would be educational for everyone who's down, you know? But I, I don't know if we have time or what would be the best route to introduce that.
That, I don't know, because...
Community breakfast, giving, maybe making a statement at the community breakfast.
Yeah, that's good.
Something, that might be good.
One or two of you being at the community breakfast and just...
donating donations to the community breakfast for the Rurkori Sunday.
That might be good. That was a good idea. Thank you.
Also, at the Lyons Park book sale. I have four to six on Thursday. Will Barstow's performing and others, and there have been different things going on. That might be a very nice time for city officials to come and, and make a statement as well.
Okay.
So, getting back to this idea of meeting, did we decide something?
Yeah, can...
You did not.
I think if you're going to do meaningful change, it can't be right away.
No.
To get the people you need at your table, it's going to take time.
Right.
So, I, I get what you're saying.
Well, I didn't mean tomorrow, but I also don't mean the end of August.
At the end of August, that's, that's still quick, to be honest with you.
That's still, I think.
I do want your people at the table, they need time, because everybody has commitments.
Oh, okay.
So, I, I think if you're going to invite not just the community, but public health, people of color to lead the discussion, to teach you, you need time to get that together.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
So, instead of the 5th Monday, maybe an ad hoc committee, an ad hoc committee of you that will work with staff to communicate to all the other leaders and the, just in the...
Hold on one second.
Other, other civic, you know, council leaders, township board.
Kind of figure out.
Yeah. Community leaders, like business leaders, and then, of course, the, the leaders who have...
Especially if you're talking Rurkori and you're talking all those townships. It's going to take...
Yeah, that's going to take a little bit of...
So, probably just a motion to put an ad hoc committee of you all. And it's easier to have just two than three, because then we have to post it, we have to follow all the open meeting laws. With just two, we could have a meeting and then they can report back to the remaining council on a weekly, or by a weekly sec, motion.
That sounds great. I'll make a motion.
Shannon makes a motion, how about a second?
I'll second.
Where are we motioning?
Gary seconds it.
What's the, what's the motion now? What's the, clarify the motion?
Ad hoc committee. Get a committee together and start brainstorming that way and report to the council.
Figure who's involved and how we contact them.
Okay. I'm, I'm good for it.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. You had one thing. What did you?
I was just going to say, I worked with, because in 2040, I worked with the Gator Government Alliance on racial equity, that people are doing this work in the state. And I think there are things we can do. I've been thinking about getting our government officials really trained in anti-racism. There's no neutrality in anti-racism. We're either going to move forward or we're really participating. We want to move forward. And I know there's small towns that are willing to do the work. So, we have community members here that are willing to join us. So, if you're going to invite us, let's do some work and let's live into that. So, that's, that's my call.
You should probably appoint who's going to be on. You should appoint who's going to be on.
Oh, we needed two people to be on that committee.
I mean, I certainly will, but I don't want to...
I personally think...
I'm retired, so they always look at me.
I personally think it needs to be all of us, not just two of us.
I would be, and I was hoping somebody would say that.
I mean, I know we got a, we've got to post the meetings three days. So, be a, let's get our crap together and post it three days, and let's all five be on it. So, we, we need to vote on that motion of two people, so, right?
No, you can get a motion on five being on the ad hoc commission, committee.
Let's just make a motion. Are you going to make a motion to have about five of them?
I'll make a motion to get an ad hoc committee with all council members.
Okay.
I'll second.
Gary seconds it. Any discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye. Against, motion carries. There it is, five of them.
I want, one thing I want to say. I was going to wait until later, but I may not get a chance to grab you, Phil. But I have a couple of guys, three, four guys, who are all retired. Well, one of them is. And we meet at the local coffee shop over here, 6:30 in the morning, almost Monday through Friday every day. I talk to them, and they totally agree with me. We've got to start inviting other folks to this meeting. It's not a meeting, it's just drinking, talking, and talking. We call it a morning meeting. So, Phil, I want you to come to that. It's...
Cold press.
The name of the coffee shop.
Cold press.
And we sit outside if it's night, or we sit inside if it's not. And we want you to come there, be part of our group. And we want to get to know you, we want you to get to know us. We're a good, good group of guys. We talk about everything from hunting to fishing to who knows what. And we want you to come there. So, 6:30 in the morning, I know it might be a little early. But we're usually there until 8:00, 8:30, because most of us are retired. But you are absolutely invited, and I expect to see you. None of us like games.
And they got good coffee over there.
Yeah. All right.
I want to thank you two again, and you girls, for coming.
I want to say thank you everybody for coming. For y'all's support, it really means a lot that y'all will take time out of y'all life to support us. I thank my neighbors, I mean, I appreciate y'all. I'll just say one thing, that y'all do make sure y'all got time, talk to the chief and get him the help that he need, because maybe they just need that help. But another thing I say, like people are saying, the kids went to school. It sucks because our children is our future. And if we start our future off bad, what can we expect besides bad results? You know, so, I know the superintendent, I think, is stepping down. But I said, y'all make time.
The principal is stepping down. I don't know, I don't think the, I haven't heard the superintendent yet.
Y'all just take time and look into it. Because I mean, it's sad when you got a kindergarten that's have to go through this. I mean, what?
I agree with you.
I know what you're going to say.
And also, I wanted to say thank you to all you guys. And if you guys, any of you guys have kids that are going through problems, I will be their friend, they can come over anytime, any age. I'm here for all of them, so, you can just text my mom.
So, this hometown pride day is coming up. I know it's been writing people, much help. There's been many people that have been reaching out to us. I don't respond to anyone as a lot. It's, there's a lot of people in the community I also don't know. A lot of people that I haven't met. So, that being said, anyone that wants to come to meet us, or help, you know, or is in the town, just because it's on pride days, will be around Saturday. And so, we can have coffee in the yard, lemonade in the yard, but...
I'll bring you some rum cakes.
We want to meet first, and we hope that our, our neighbors want to meet us. And I think that's one of the biggest steps, is just having that interaction and that communication and allowing each other some time. It's just hard to make that first step. So, our door is open, and we'll be on Saturday.
I want to thank everybody for showing up. We are going to move on with our meeting, so, if anybody wants to stick around, they're welcome to it. Otherwise...
It's really interesting.
Yes, very interesting.
It is. I've got some add-ons that are very important.
Good job, young man.
Kelly, you did a good job.
It was your first time? You did so good. I would have never thought it was your first time. Hey. You did a really good job. You did a really good job.
Yes.
Yeah?
Thank you, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Because we're all this color here, so we need other voices. Yes, thank you, thank you.
We're moving forward.
We're not 6:30, huh?
No, sorry.
Oh, were we supposed to, we're going to just take a break?
Yeah, the retired's on him. No.
And Andrea, if you need anything, call any one of us. I think all our phone numbers are...
They're on the webpage.
On the webpage.
Yeah.
Call us, talk to us, or whatever. I think you called me during, over the weekend, didn't you? Or did, were you the one? Somebody, two people, two different people called me. No, you didn't? Okay.
Uh-uh, no.
Jennifer Woods was wonderful. Because I, I called her back and I talked to her for, oh God, I think it happened on... And I still did not know that that was that truck that went into your house. But I seen it, and she was talking about something, and it's like, it was all of a sudden Monday, I think it was.
Yep.
I think it was Monday, it's like, that guy, no, somebody was talking about it at work. It's like, that was in your house. In Cold Spring, it's like, then I knew right away it was your house. It's just like... But, yeah. Yeah, if you need help with that, too, at any time, make sure you let us know.
Yeah. No, Monday through Friday, I think he's, they go every day.
That's the thing, you know?
They're retired.
Anyway, Friday morning, yeah.
Can we get a Bloody Mary?
Right.
Did you say you have some kind of security?
We do, we do have personal security.
Really? Really? I bet you do.
So.
Well, thank you for coming. I'm glad you did.
Thank, no, not a problem, not a problem.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, guys.
No, no problem.
See you later.
Thank you.
Take care.
How you doing, sir?
And I guess I was supposed to ask everybody to go outside.
I did.
Did you?
Asked most of them, yeah.
Okay. Okay. We will move on to number, number six. Fire Department report. Chief Weber. Smoke?
Hey.
How was fire fest?
Bad it. Uh, it was very hot. Um, it was a good turnout. Um, a couple notes on it. We sold just over six thousand eight hundred tickets.
Wow.
And we had scanned in just over six, I think it was like six thousand four hundred and fifty were scanned in, so it was a good, good turnout. Food vendors, I believe, some of them. Matt could chase back and get more hamburgers and stuff, so they all had a good, good. Good thing there. Um, Jason probably talks about whatever happened that night, but, I mean, it was hot and went through a lot of water and things like that, and a lot of beverages, so. And we've been cleaning up for the last three days. Last four days, we've been doing all kinds of things. So anyway, guys, any questions? Do you hear any complaints or anything about it?
I haven't heard anything.
No, I haven't heard a thing.
Well, that's good.
I heard that it was good. It was busy. And, I mean, I, I heard good things. I know, I know a number of people who went, so.
We had moved the vent, uh, the food vendors from the back up a little farther so that they'd be closer. And we had, you know, I think two years ago, we had like forty, forty-five hundred people, so it's like two thousand more people.
Yeah.
Use that restroom, but other than that, I'm, you know, I mean, if you hear any complaints about it, you need to let me know, so we can address our group. Um, call wise, I don't know if I had reported it last month, but we had fifty-eight calls in May. We had forty in June, and we're at thirty-three right now for July, for a total of three hundred and eight so far. Since, it would be December first is our. Yeah, so. Grass fires have been quiet, gunwood, but, uh, few things that are still loud yet is fire pits. They have to be in a three-foot circle, contained. Uh, as of right now, we can still have them, but the state can put a, tamper that real quickly.
Water the grass before you do it, though.
Well, right. Water the grass, even if it's dead, it's gonna help. But they shut off all the parks now with regular, uh, campfires.
Campfires, yeah.
The only thing you can have is gas drills right now for cooking wise, so. And they could put that ban on it anytime, so. And we'll just bridge it on somehow. We'll have to get it throughout the cities. But, um, other than that, we got everything cleaned up up there, and brewery's been real good to work with, like always, so thank you to the brewery. John, thank you for letting us use your, some of your trucks to haul stuff down, and whatever your workers have done. Thank you. Anybody have anything else for me? Pretty much lack of sleep is catching up. But, and a seat doesn't help, but, like I said, if anybody has any concerns or questions, let me know. All righty.
That's it?
Yeah.
Anybody got anything for smoke? Thank you very much. Thanks for everything you guys do.
Yeah, thank you.
Public Works Director report. John Stevie, along with Brian Lynch.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Good, John.
Hello.
A few things on my report tonight for action. Um, went out, like I said, last meeting, was going out for some quotes on some pipe work we need to be done. Well, number three project, I've talked to you guys about sealing well three. With that, it's gonna take some pipe disconnect. Kramer, Kramer Trucking and Excavating was a little bit at four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to do this work. Furthermore, to be paid out of the water, water budget, if you'd like to read that.
Yes, I will. Recommendation: To approve disconnecting well number three and award the project to Kramer Excavating at a cost of four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And furthermore, to be paid out of the water, water budget, equipment, repair, and upkeep line item sixty-three thirteen. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Gary makes a motion. How about a second?
I'll second it.
Shannon seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Um, the next, next thing, uh, if you guys remember talking about, uh, probably last year, uh, the Winneke property down at the end of Frog Town. We, we budgeted seventeen thousand five hundred for that project last year. Kramer Trucking and Excavating was a little bid, as you can see in my report, to install twenty-seven inch catch basin, three hundred feet of twelve inch HDPE pipe, remove and replace riprap and cleanup. Furthermore, to be paid out of the storms for capital expenditures, sixty-four thirteen for ten thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. So it was kinda nice it came in quite a bit lower.
Yeah. Recommendation: To approve the installation of a catch basin, HDPE pipe, and replace riprap at Frog Town and award the project to Kramer Excavating at a cost of ten thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And furthermore, to be paid out of the storm sewer budget capital expenditure line item sixty-four thirteen. I need a motion on that. Doug makes a motion. How about a second?
I'll second.
Shannon seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
With that, I'd like to thank Jason Winneke. Um, he's been real good to work with, with our future projects coming up. Um, he's gonna allow construction equipment to go across his property to access the golf course, which is gonna save us money in the end as well from not tearing up the golf course so much, so. He's been real good to work with, and I wanna thank him for that, so. Um, the next thing that I haven't, haven't gotten, uh, I'm waiting for one more bid yet for the well five, uh, connection to tie that back into the city distribution system, so. I've got two bids right now, one from C N L, one from Kramer, and I'm waiting for Eagle Construction on that one, so. That should be by the next meeting. Otherwise, um, just a little update. I did receive an email from the Minnesota D N R, um, for a water conservation plan, um, slash water ban. I did talk to Nikki Blake Bradley from the D N R to find out the details on it, and if there's gonna be enforcement action, anything like that. As of right now, the D N R is enforcing action upon cities and places that, um, pull water from surface water. So, St. Cloud pulling water from the Mississippi, or I think Minneapolis does as well, but, um, some other cities that are pulling water from surface water, they're, they're on a watering ban. And you'll see that in the headlines, you know, across the state of Minnesota. As of right now, we are on water conservation, and what the D N R is concerned about is our water appropriations permit. The details are, in, in January, they wanna use your January daily usage, and then you can add fifty percent on top of that, is what they would like to see you add for usage. Currently, we're at two million gallons a day, still. Uh, it's been that way for a while now, and in January, we use a million gallons a day. So, we're about five hundred thousand over what they're, they're asking us to do. With that, you know, I've been stressing with the residents to water odd and even days. Um, as a city, we've done things with the splash pad to reduce the amount of water there. If it, if it does become an issue moving forward, it's gonna leave us no choice but to probably shut the splash pad down. That is a pretty big water user. Um, the sprinkling systems around town, uh, we're already reducing them down to nothing for the ones that are just for, uh, a city property or whatever. We do have the region baseball tournament coming up this year for the ballpark. I mean, I don't wanna shut that down, but if the D N R says you're shutting it down, we're shutting it down. So, anything the public can do to help, we can't stress it enough. I still drive around on a daily basis and see sprinklers running in the middle of the day. And this isn't just for the public on the distribution system. This is also for sand points as well, cause that's, um, you know, creating problems for the aquifer as well, or, you know, the water table. But we don't need green, get, green grass during a drought. Um, this is a, this is a bad time, a bad thing for Minnesota. Uh, we look back, Pete had some pictures in his desk from nineteen eighty-eight. Um, nineteen eighty-eight was a little bit worse. There was no water moving over the dam. We're not far from that. It's, it's dry out there, so. Anything you can do to reduce water and, um, hopefully save us from having to put on a watering ban is greatly appreciated, and, I mean, everybody wants to drink water, and we're not stopping that, but we don't need green grass right now, so. Do, do the best you can. Reduce it, figure out a way to make it work in your family, but, um, you know, I, I had a conversation with Gary, and some things, you know, maybe going from odd and even days to maybe just twice a week, or, you know, something just to keep it alive and not to a drought, but. Anything that you can do to, to help the situation is, is beneficial to the city, so. Anybody have any questions on that? I know it's, uh, a big topic.
You know, I know it sounds a little bit strange, probably, but I do believe that pilgrims and the brewery also has a responsibility, and they should know about this. And they should be informed that if we get to a critical stage, I don't know, is it fair to say they may have to cut back and participate in this too?
Well, you know, that's.
I realize it's very difficult.
Yeah, that's a difficult decision that I don't wanna make.
Very difficult for homeowners in some situations, who have now planted grass, who have watering grass, who have this grass growing, and possibly be told, oops, you gotta stop. Well, I do think pilgrims and the brewery has a responsibility here as well.
So the, to stop watering their lawn, you mean?
No, I don't care if it means reducing their production. I mean, I know that sounds crazy, but.
Well, and the D N R has tiers, like, uh, what's the most important, you know, there, are they, are they cutting back with crop irrigation? Yes and no. I mean, that's a pretty high priority to the D N R. Um, municipalities are high priority. The drinking water part of it, the fact that you have water in your house is a high priority. Watering your grass is not. That's one of the lowest priorities on the D N R's list. Business production is a higher priority because it's what makes the world go around. So, I think from a city standpoint, we have to just go off of kind of their recommendations first, um, and start, you know, at the bottom of their priority list of what would go first. But I mean, if, if it ever came to that, I guess it'd be a tough one, but.
Oh, absolutely, it would be. But have you had conversations with them, just to let them know the situation we're in, and anything they can possibly do?
Well, see, they.
Do they get contacted separately?
Absolutely, they do. Um, so industrial, the D N R, um, monitors that as well. The brewery has a water appropriations per, permit. Pilgrims Pride has a water appropriations permit. They've all, they've all got the same emails I've gotten, and they all have their same contacts, so.
So that they aren't caught off guard?
No, they're not caught off guard by any means, so. I'm sure there's things they're doing. I don't necessarily hear all of them, but things to do to save water as well. You know, I know, like, the brewery just put in a new pasteurizer that's saving them two million gallons a month. So they're always trying to do things to help save water, but, and understanding the, not just on a drought year, but the, with the drought stream in town, water conservation is, is big for us anyway, so. It's always kind of an ongoing thing.
That sounds like you guys are communicating.
Yep. So, otherwise, that's all I have, unless you have any more questions for me on that.
Anybody got anything for John? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll go on to number eight, City Engineer Report. Brian Lynch.
Mr. Mayor and Council.
Brian.
Couple of updates. Um, Connor had one fifty-eight, we, First Street South, we've talked that, you know, work is done right now for the year. We, obviously, with, just what we were talking about with the drought, there's some of the grass that was planted this spring. We did try to water some of it, but obviously, we've run into some difficult times here. So we'll be looking at it again here coming up, what areas need addressing, and it might not be this fall that they get addressed, if it's truly that dry.
Yeah.
It might have to be a spring thing. Um, kind of evaluate that as we get there, but just, um, for those listening, or if people contact you, we're, we're well aware that there's some things out there, especially on the turf side, that, that will need addressing. Uh, there's also, well, and we talked last time, there's some concrete that we'll get to, but we've, we've kinda left that towards the, uh, toward the end of the year here, too. When it comes to the trees, um, you know, we're encouraging the homeowners that did get boulevard trees to water them. Um, I don't think that that's necessarily part of the watering restrictions.
No, we've said that, we've said that since speaking in a field, maybe, maybe kind of grass or trees that you can plant and stuff.
Yeah, so, so even the grass, you, you know, to keep that new grass alive, even if you can, um, the trees, what we recommend is, so there are the ball and burlap, so there's a, around the root ball, there's, there's burlap around there. Eventually, the roots grow out of that. At this point, talking to the landscape architect, they haven't really made it out yet, so it's keeping that area around the tree, you know, not just watering right at the trunk, but a little ways around, keeping that moist. You don't want it saturated, um, because that can be bad for it as well. So really just running a trickle of a hose by it, um, a couple times a week, just trying to keep that area moist. Keeping that, keeping some water in the tree, keeping it alive. Um, they're very stressed right now, number one, cause they're new, and number two, it's a drought, so. Encourage those folks that did get trees to, to put a little water on them.
All right.
Moving on, Blue Heron Heights, uh, just working on final grading and cleanup. I think they were talking about getting some homes started out there soon. So the sidewalk's in, the utilities are in, so really just wrapping that up for the year. Um, the final lift of pavement will go on next, next spring. Water treatment plant, we're checking for leaks. Um, we filled up the clear well, so the clear well's that basement, basically the basement of the plant, holds the clean water and it holds the pumps. We got the, all those constructed, so we fill them up with water, and you look for leaks in the walls, so we're working on a couple of little cracks, sealing those up, and then, uh, moving on to the next parts of the plant. So this was kind of a critical step that they're finishing up here. Punch list on wells eight and nine, just addressing some last minute things. Um, those are pumping to the brewery right now, so. Industrial wastewater pretreatment, um, we've met with the thirty percent design with city staff. We've gotten good comments from them. We're doing some checking, um, with some other facilities that have similar types of treatment, so we're just kinda working on, uh, cleaning up that thirty percent design, getting some more, a little more input. And then, once that's ready to go, kinda finalize that, and then move into the next stages of design. One of the things I wanted to talk with you about, we talked about this a couple months ago when we went out for the, uh, the vendor portion of it, where we sent out R F Ps to vendors, basically that they can come, propose their systems to help with the treatment. So we, we did that. The next step, when we move to the sixty percent, is we go out for a request for firm price proposal. So what that means is, that vendor, kinda similar to how we did the water plant, that vendor will supply equipment, and they'll also come with a number that will go in the bid package. So that will, they have, they know enough information to go out and say, this is what our equipment will cost, this is what our design will cost, this is the installation will cost, all the things that come with this proprietary equipment. They're gonna give us a number. That number goes into the final bid that the contractor bids on, so that all the contractors bid on the same amount, same, they're all equal. But we wanna get it at this point in the process to help kinda guarantee what, what we're gonna have to pay, what that system is gonna cost, as well as they'll start working on the design of their proprietary equipment. And then we'll be working with them to help integrate that together, because it's, it's not just you can hook up a pipe and you're done. These multiple systems have to work together. So what we're planning on doing is, we're gonna put out a request for firm price proposals. It will be advertised in the record, it will be advertised in other trade publications, we'll get responses. From there, the city will evaluate, staff will evaluate the responses we got, based on the equipment, based on a whole number of factors, cost being one of them. But a, a number of factors, how easy is it to operate, you know, what's the longevity, those sort of things. At that point, we'll come to the council with the staff recommendation, and then we'll just look for approval from the council to say they agree. That will be then what we will move forward with, um, through design and then into bidding. So, we've talked about this with the city attorney, gone through the processes. We, we talked about it early on, and this is a continuation of the processes we talked about. So just to let you know, we'll be, we're gonna be going out for that request for firm price proposals for the vendor portions of the project. It's a lot to take in, but I wanted to, you know, bring it to you in case there's any concerns, but we've, this is just a continuation of that process to get, get that vendor. concerns, but we've, this is just a continuation of that process to get, get that vendor equipment in the plant. So we'll be putting an ad in the record on talking to them on Thursday unless you vehemently object.
Doesn't look like there's any objections.
No. Go ahead, do your job.
All right. We're also doing some-
Just about anything out of-
Right now, yeah. Right now, it's all, and it's like, what? Oh, yeah. Do your job.
Sorry, Brian.
Nope, that's okay. No problem. Doing some soil borings at industrial pretreatment, doing some soil borings on the public safety site and then sanitary and water improvements. We have a pre-con scheduled for next week, so moving forward on that as well.
All right. That's it?
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So you could speak to us.
Move on to number nine, Police Department Report, Chief Bloom.
Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening.
Jason.
Just a couple of things. National Night Out is August 3rd, we have an event at Alexander Park, we also have an event in Richmond. Both the events start at 5:30, we'll have officers at both and then some, we'll have a grill going, we'll have utensils and that kind of stuff for people to come out and then enjoy a good evening, so hopefully we can see a lot of people out there. Couple of the things for recently, River Lake Days was two weeks ago, we had extra officers on, on both Friday and Saturday nights. It was a well-attended event overall. I would say it was pretty average to most years with incidents that we needed to deal with, it was relatively happy crowd, so it was good for us, so. Few, few hiccups, but overall, I, I gave a list with the stuff that we dealt with, but overall, it was kind of average year for us, so with the amount of people there, it was glad to see that. Fire Fest, first off, wanted to say thank you to St. Joe, Wade Park, Painesville, Sartell, Sartell Reserves, Avon, Sock Center, Belgrade, and the trap team from the high school all helped out at the event on our end, so the reserves and the trap team helped out with the parking and stuff and then the rest of the officers were inside. It was a big event, a lot of people there, it went well until the sun went down and then we got busy really fast. We were stretched pretty thin there for a good couple hours, but we managed and overall, it was a really good event.
Good.
One of the things we're doing with the county currently is people in mental crisis, setting it up that it's not just a law enforcement response and there's been a big push over the last several months to maybe the last couple of years of people with mental health, behavioral health, mental crisis, that type of thing, where it's law enforcement going when it, it should be, you know, if somebody's in immediate danger, law enforcement may be the best response at the time, but that mental health aspect of a crisis response team, behavioral health specialists and that type of thing, bringing those in to help out with that, so. Working through how that's going to look in long-term, you know, immediately and then also long-term on how to best work through that, so one of the projects we're working on with the county right now.
Would it be someone in the area or are we, like, would it be someone that it's going to take them a half hour, 45 minutes to respond and you have to sit there and, you know what I mean? Like, I'm, I'm not saying you have to, you have to sit there and wait for the social worker or whoever it might be to come out.
So, and there's a couple of different, like, domestic assault victims, they now have an advocate that comes up to the residents, usually if, before the officers leave the residents, they want an advocate there to be there with the victim. So I, I think the end game is to have something like that where there's a response to the residents. Right now, there's a screening that the person that calls in, that's going to go through dispatch, depending on how they answer those, I think it's four questions or however many questions they have through their process. It's either directed to law enforcement to immediately respond or it goes to a crisis response team where they can get different thing, different program, them, you know, different help to them, where it's not just law enforcement deciding whether we bring them to the hospital for evaluation or, you know, find a family, friend or somebody else to sit with them. It's, they can, the different aspects that they can offer will be available to them. And then depending on them talking to us, they may refer it back to law enforcement where we still do need to respond, so there's a lot of things to kind of work out on how that process really unfolds.
Okay.
So, but definitely looking into it. So I think it's a good thing to go down, so.
Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah, just, I'm, you know, just curious, curious on how the process works.
Yep, so right now, it's in the beginning stages, I don't think they have people that can go out right now, it's going to be more of a phone screening and then if somebody does need to respond, it'd be given back to law enforcement. And I think the end game is that they would actually have a team that would go and try and do an assessment and help that person out.
And I think, yeah, I think that's the ultimate goal.
So that's all I really have right now unless you guys have questions.
Anybody got anything for Jason? Thank you very much.
No, I, no, I'm sorry, I did have one question.
Yes.
Would you be willing to join an ad hoc committee?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Good idea. Number 10, City Administrator Report.
Yes, the first one on there is the resolution accepting the remaining easements from the property owners for the lines that will be bringing the, segregating the sewer and water for the brewery. There were a couple property owners who had some questions and so these are the last ones that need to be signed for and recorded. I, I know that the River Oaks is going to sign it, I don't actually have the signed one from them yet, so I don't, in the bills, you don't see the payment to them, so that will definitely, soon as they bring that signed one back, I'm hoping by the next meeting, you'll see the payment to them for their easement on the bills.
Okay. Recommendation: To approve Resolution 2021-29, a resolution accepting the easements for the brewery sanitary and water main. That's what it is, right?
Yep.
Okay. Easements for the brewery and sanitary and water main improvements project. I need a motion. I will. Fran makes a motion, how about a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Shannon seconds it. Any discussion on it? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Anything else?
Yes. No, I, I have a couple of things that kind of came up. So today, we received our American Rescue Plan Act money for the city based on our population. We received half of it, it's right around $226,600 and some odd change. One of the items that it can be used for is for sewer and water projects and I don't need a motion yet, but I think one thing we might want to do, because it's going to be about 400, just under 450,000, or just over $450,000, is use that towards the treatment plant. As we have a cer, excess expenses outside of what the state gave us of our 4 million and this would help bring that down, we have that loan, so. I'll bring something, some sort of resolution at a different time unless you want to think about other ways to use it, but we, we are limited on some things and water and sewer is, projects are one and this qualifies as an item. So I'll bring that to the next motion, meeting with the full numbers and that you have that discussion, but I just wanted to get that out there. I did get an email today at about 3:55 that our pre-application to the USDA for the potential to get a loan from them for the fire and police, we do meet eligibility, so they're going to be sending me the full application packet and when I get that from him in the next week or so, I'm going to have a Zoom meeting with him and Jess Green and Jacob Ryder, because we still don't know which, which one's the better way to go, the longer term with a shorter or a smaller interest rate or the shorter term with a little bit higher, so I want to keep both tracks going, so we're working on that. So it was nice to hear that we got that. And then finally, I got today as well from the county, I don't know if you remember, about a year ago, someone asked us to do a speed study from County Road Two up County Road 50 to about 158th and we sent that to the county to do and then they did it to the, they have to request it from MINDOT and then COVID hit, well, we got it today. And they do recommend, and signs might be going up in the next week or so. So where the dynamic sign is on, just past Weber's House on Two, right past Six, that's going to stay, so it'll be 30 from the roundabout to there. And then from there to 158, they're doing a transition of 45 and then after 158, it'll go up to 55. So right there, the school stays slower, but that middle transition, according to MINDOT, that our size of community and the way that road comes in and the fact we go from city to kind of a mixed and then to rural, they're going to add that 45 in there. And then you have on your desk, I got that letter that you all received at 4:20 today. Excellent for them to do it, all you need to do is pass a resolution to, to ask the county to do one, so I'll have that ready at the next, next city council meeting too for a speed study on County Road Two, which hasn't been done since 2012 and there's been quite a bit of change up there. So I will notify the county of, I'll, I'll bring that for you to discuss and if you recommend it, I'll get it to the county after the August 10th meeting. And with that, that's all I-
That's it. Number 11, Commission Updates. Planning did not meet, EDA met.
EDA, we went and visited-
Oh, we did, we visited Wealth Care, that was a nice-
Yeah.
Yeah, they did a nice job in there. They got more to remodel yet.
Yeah. I was surprised, I thought the whole thing was remodeled.
Yeah, it's just the front part.
The first half of it, the rest was still, yeah.
And they want to do that yet.
Well, they have a lot of other stores that they need to stick money into also, but-
And in the meeting, we didn't really discuss a whole lot, did we? No.
No.
Not that I remember of, anyway.
We're waiting for, but we're waiting for something, right Dave?
I think so. We're not, we're not young minds anymore. We should write it down more often.
We're just waiting.
I just have to bring the minutes for them, just in case.
Uh, Park Board, did you guys meet?
No, we're meeting-
Meeting in August.
23rd.
Two weeks.
August 23rd.
23rd.
Recorrid Trail.
My wife had surgery, so I was not there.
Yep, we met and are starting, we did get the funding and so we are starting the process to get the building, to get all the permits and get all the plans finalized and hopefully, I think we're hoping to bid in late fall to have a early spring start and I think it will probably take a little bit longer than the Richmond side did, so probably end of August after, for construction and ribbon cutting.
That'll be so nice when that's done. That's it then. Number 12, List of Bills and Additions, Recommendation: To review and accept payment of the accounts payable according to the list and supplemental list presented by city staff, I need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion.
Fran makes a motion, how about a second? Gary seconds it, any discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. General Questions, Comments from City Council, Fran?
None.
Doug? Shannon?
Oh, I think I've said enough tonight, I'm all out of words.
Gary? I have nothing. Number 14, Motion to Adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Gary makes a motion, Shannon seconds it, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Thank you guys very much, thank everybody.